All rise. Oh yea, oh yea, oh yea. Silence is commanded by this honorable commission. All those having business draw near.
Thank you, and you may be seated at this time. I've asked you to be seated as we begin these proceedings, and I please urge you to adhere to the deputy when he says silence is commanded. We will not entertain any interruptions. I have officers stationed all around, and if you interrupt these proceedings, I politely ask them to have you removed, okay? It's designed to have, you know what your county commission is doing. We apologize for the lateness and tardiness of our starting, but there were some issues that came up overnight that we had to get done this morning before we could get to our public meeting. And so at this time, I'm going to ask you to also look at all your devices, all right? Whether it's a cellphone, a bullhorn, or whatever you have, make sure it's silent. Make sure it's not on at all, okay? We would appreciate that because if it goes to our local bed and breakfast, it's going to be trouble for you getting it from the sheriff's department, okay? And so I don't want your phone to be confiscated. I don't want any of you, you to be confiscated or anything else. But we do have to follow the rules and regulations and the laws of this commission. We are so happy to have with us the Reverend Jason Tallness, all right? From the Lutheran Church who has come to us today. And he's a graduate of high school at Henry, all right? Heights, he's a graduate of the University of Minnesota. He has a master's degree in divinity from the Lutheran Seminary at St. Paul, Minnesota. He's also done work in New York and other places around. Now he is here with us in Chatham County. And let me be the first to welcome you, all right? I think you and I met one time when I came over to the Just meeting, all right? I think that's the only time our presence has been. But let me say how glad we are to have you a part of us. And as you give your inspiration, all right? But when you get ready for the invocation and sign the prayer, if you will, let us know so that we can stand and have prayer with you. And then after then, join me as we do the pledge of allegiance to the flag in the hands of Bishop Tallson. Tallness.
Thank you, Commissioner Ellis and commissioners. It's an honor to speak to you today. When I was, you went to seminary to become a pastor. I had aspirations to change the world with the love of Jesus. And then I got to the church setting and got into trouble because I only wanted to change the Sunday bulletin. That's how it works when you're a leader. I'm sure your work here as commissioners is similar to mine. We love people, we want to serve people, we want to make a difference. And, but leaders are often put in no-win situations. I know Chairman Ellis, you're also a respected pastor in the community, so you might know this doubly well. If you make a change, someone is going to be angry or frustrated or disappointed. But if you don't make a change, someone is likely to be angry, disappointed, or frustrated. Citizens do well to be aware of the responsibilities that you have, you the commissioners bear. And you don't need me to tell you that we live in an age where trust in the government is at an all-time low. In contrast to that, every person I know who's in public service cares about their constituency, loves the principles on which our government is based, and wants to help people in our communities. But the climate these days isn't always conducive to the work of government in this very changing world. The writer Leo Tolstoy said, "Everyone thinks of changing the world, but no one thinks about changing themselves." So often, we resist change when it touches our own lives. And yet, as leaders, you know that change is inevitable. The work of government is not only about serving people's present needs, but also guiding communities through the changes that they may resist, changes that ultimately lead to growth, health, hope, and prosperity. Part of the challenge is in communities, is communities can be stuck. James Baldwin wrote that people are trapped in history, and history is trapped in them. And yet, what is crucial is that the distinction between the past, present, and future is not as clear as it seems. So commissioners, your work lives right in that tension. You carry the weight of history, decisions made by those who came before you, while also shaping a future that will outlast you. Government requires both humility to honor what has been and courage to step forward into what must be. I love Chatham County, and there have been many commissioners before you, and there'll be many commissioners after you, but now is your time. Please know that we, the people, are rooting for you. We're with you, we are behind you as you deliberate the important matters of this day. And I'll invite all present to please stand as I say a prayer. Gracious God, we thank you for the gift of community and for these leaders who serve Chatham County. Bless our commissioners with wisdom that looks beyond themselves, courage to do what is right even when it isn't easy, and humility to listen with open hearts. Bless this meeting, bless Chatham County, bless all who live and work here. We ask this in your holy name, amen.
Amen. Please join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. To Pastor Tallness, we thank you for being here with us today, and we hope that you have our letter of appreciation, all right? We are not allowed to pay you, but thank you so much. And we look forward to, as you work with Just and the community, we look forward to do even more and more things with you, all right? So thank you for being here. Roll call.
Chester A. Ellis, chairman.
Present.
Bobby Lockett, District Three, vice chairman.
Present.
Melinda Scott Hodge, District Two, chairman pro temp.
Present.
Anthony Wayne Noah, District One.
Here.
Patrick K. Farrell, District Four.
Here.
Tanya Milton, District Five.
Present.
Erin Whitley, District Six. Dean Kickleider, District Seven.
Here.
Marcia Buford, District Eight.
Here.
All right, thank you so much. At this time, we go to proclamations and special presentations. And our first will be from the proclamation declaring the month of September as ovarian cancer awareness month in Chatham County. We have some folks here who are supposed to accept this. Would you come forward to the mic? Are they here? Are they here? All right. Let me just read this into the record. Now therefore, our Chester Ellis Chairman, on behalf of the Chatham County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim September 2025 as ovarian cancer awareness month, and Chatham County encourage the citizens and government agencies, businesses, organizations, and the media and other interested groups to increase awareness of what America can do to detect, treat ovarian cancer. And witness whereof, I hereto set my hands and call the seal of Chatham County, Georgia, to be affixed as fifth day of September 2025. The next goes to the proclamation declaring September 17th through the 23rd, 2025, as Constitution Week in Chatham County. We have some folks here who are here to accept. Come and bring your group. Just you? Okay, all right. Normally, I know they used to have a...
They did. Today, it's just me.
That's okay, all right. Let me read this partially into the records, all right? The County of Chatham, Georgia proclamation. Whereas on September 17, 1787, the United States Constitution, U.S. Constitution, America's most important document, was signed by 55 delegates to the Constitutional Convention in Philadelphia Hall, Independence Hall. And whereas this celebration of the Constitution was started by the Daughters of the American Revolution in 1955, where they petitioned Congress to set aside September 17th to 23rd annually to declare and observe the Constitution Week. Now therefore, our Chester Ellis Chairman, on behalf of the Chatham County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2025, as Constitution Week in Chatham County, and urge all citizens to participate in celebrations and our Constitution, reaffirming our commitment as citizens of our great nation. And witness whereof, I hereto set my hands and call the seal of Chatham County, Georgia, to be affixed as fifth day of September 2025. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and commissioners, for this proclamation. The DAR is truly grateful for y'all to shining a light on helping us celebrate Constitution Week. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much for being here. And tell all my friends I say hello.
Oh, well.
All right. So if you will now, just turn around and hold the proclamation up to the camera behind you.
Yeah.
And young lady who is responsible for our pitches, she would direct you from there.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. All right, now we will have a live Oak Public Library update. Mr. Manager.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to ask Mr. Whit if she would come to the podium and provide you with a update from the Live Public Library.
Okay. The presentation.
Okay, good morning, and thank you for...
Before you start, now pull the mics down towards you. There you go, we want to be able to hear you.
Is that better?
There you go.
Okay. So, good morning, I'm Lola DeWitt, Executive Director for Live Public Libraries. Thank you for giving me time today to talk about what is going on with the library. For those of you who may not know, Live Public Libraries serves Effingham, Chatham, and Liberty Counties, and we are one of the largest library systems in the state of Georgia. Today, I want to tell you a little bit about how we support literacy, community, and connection. But please know that this presentation in no way covers everything that the LOPL staff is doing. In October 2024, we concluded a year-long strategic planning process. This work was necessary to bring our communities and stakeholders together to provide input and validate our path moving forward. And some of you probably participated in that process. We selected Baton Global as the consultant, and they began work with us in October 2023. We're going to give you copies of the strategic plan, and I invite you to read this letter at your leisure. But I will point out here that our new mission and values were developed by a strategic planning committee that consisted of a group of 15 staff across the system, including administration and branch staff. Additionally, throughout the plan, you will see that literacy is a cornerstone of our values, goals, and priorities. This slide represents the process we undertook with Baton Global. And before we began the strategic planning process, we knew that many of the people in the community were unaware of all the resources that the library provides. So much of the feedback that we received was not a shock. However, we were very pleasantly surprised of the over 1,300 responses we received, and it speaks to the passion that the people in our community feel about libraries and the services and the spaces they expect to experience. During this process, we established goals and key performance indicators to measure progress. So you'll see that these are the five key priorities in our strategic plan. They are listed one through five, but they are not in any kind of order except for literacy, which is always number one. Today, I'm going to talk about literacy engagement spaces and staff. I will not touch on stewardship, but you should know that we are in the process of initiating a robust development and fundraising plan. We define literacy broadly, encompassing more than just reading and writing. As you can see, we've set clear goals and objectives outlining the steps we can take and the outcomes that we hope to achieve. The success of our summer reading challenge with over 8,000 signups reflects the impact of the frontline staff engaging with the community. Our Ready to Read Centers featuring resources such as decodable books, sensory items, digital learning tools, and parent caregiver guides with funding from help, I'm sorry, with funding help from St. Thomas Thrift and the Green family, these Ready to Read Centers were launched across the system in five locations, three of them in Chatham County, at Bull Street Southwest and the Islands location. To build awareness about our student play cards, the LOPL communications team created a physical play card as well as launching new library mascots. As we planned the launch of these cards, the United Way of the Coastal Empire invited us to join their Read United Day event, and we saw that as an ideal opportunity to promote the play cards. Savannah-Chatham County Schools eagerly supported the initiative, recognizing its potential to track and improve literacy outcomes. So a student play card allows students to check out up to five items without incurring any fines and gives them access to the library when the physical library is closed. So here you'll see some pictures of our summer reading kickoff activities. A total of 2,117 people joined us at our kickoff parties. And then the next slide, you'll see just a variety of the kinds of special programming we had over this last summer, where 24,000 people attended our programs. Building on our strategic plan, which focuses on connecting sustainable services, we've made significant strides in community engagement. With new leadership overseeing the department in 2024, we are rethinking how to best utilize our library spaces and the trust the community has in us to enhance their lives. Our yearly programs, such as back-to-school activities and literacy nights, are just a few examples of how we're strengthening those connections. Additionally, our Books by Mail service supports individuals with mobility impairments. So this next slide, you'll see one of the two examples of our large-scale community engagement collaborations. One, which was an expungement clinic partnering with the Chatham County District Attorney's Office. And the second was a passport pop-up collaboration with the U.S. Department of State and Senator John Ossoff's office. So nine LOPL employees from across the system completed Letters Training, or the Science of Reading, the same literacy training Georgia school teachers and early childcare educators are receiving. These employees are now using their knowledge to develop programs and teach their coworkers, helping to drive change in the reading culture of our community. And that is also linked to our Ready to Read Centers. We are also working in partnership with Savannah Tech to provide a public leadership certificate to help staff move into leadership positions that do not require an MLS degree. We are assessing the progress of this partnership to ensure our requirements to develop strong library leaders are met with this partnership. An Employee of the Month award culminating in an Employee of the Year recognition has been developed to acknowledge and share outstanding performance system-wide. We are grateful for the funding from Chatham County through the CIP process to repair the leaking roof and damaged exterior wall at the Southwest Chatham Library location. Also under library spaces, SPOS and State of Georgia funding renovations have begun at the Carnegie Library to address longstanding flooding and ADA compliance issues. We are also in the process of receiving proposals for the architect for the Oglethorpe Mall Replacement Library project. The Poole Library replacement is in the design concept phase. If you want to keep up with all the capital projects and building improvements happening across the system, you can check our Capital Projects page on the library website. And this is a rendering of the, this is a copy of the design concept for the Oglethorpe Replacement Library. And then the next slide is an interior of the design concept for the renovations occurring at the Carnegie Library. So this slide just shows Live Public Libraries' impact and numbers, and you can see our system-wide visitation from last year and the amount of visitation in just specifically Chatham County. You can see we have 100, over 106,000 Chatham County cardholders. And last, this past summer, we served over 2,000 lunches in collaboration with America's Second Harvest. So September is library card signup month, and across our system, about one in three people currently hold a library card. Naturally, we want everyone to have a card, so this month is our time to encourage people without a card to get one, and anyone who has an expired card to get it renewed. To that end, we have asked three people to represent the library and promote library cards and all the benefits having a card provides. These library card ambassadors are featured in media, posters, and at select library events during the month of September. Our Chatham County Ambassador is Mia Mance, Executive Director of the Savannah Downtown Association. And you can see the wonderful poster that we developed featuring Mia and her adorable daughters. Events happening in Chatham County to celebrate Library Card Sign Up Month are listed here, beginning with this evening at the Bull Street Library at 7:00. We're going to have the fabulous Inquinox Band on the steps of the Bull Street Library. And then next week, you can see we're also having a fundraiser at Arslay Station, so that we hope throughout September, you will join us. If you do not have a library card, please get one. If your library card has been expired, please get it renewed. And that's my presentation.
All right. Any questions from any commissioners? All right. Commissioner Milton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to congratulate you on all the work that you're doing. You got a porch party tonight, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And that'll be for every Friday in the month of September?
So, not every Friday. September 12th will be at the Southwest Library for Groove Electic, and then out in Effingham County on the 19th, it will be the Salt Flat Pickers.
Very good. Thank you very much.
All right, any other? Yes, Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you talk to us about the, because first of all, this is amazing. I love how our library is alive and well, and because literacy is truly important to children's educational foundation. If they can read, they can learn. But the library is so much more than just books now, and you all have kept up with the present age, and so can you talk about some of the things available to people other than just books with the library?
Yes, ma'am. So we actually have, let me see, we have ukuleles, trying to think of some other things. Help me, what else do we have? I'm thinking, I didn't expect that question.
Some of the technology.
So, oh yeah, so we give out, we have hotspots, we have Chrome, we have lots of Chromebooks. I said the ukuleles. NASA kits. We just recently formed a relationship with American Red Cross, so we'll be circulating blood pressure monitors. Trying to think, there's just so much. But you can go on our website and see all the amazing things that we offer. There's something else I'm forgetting. Oh, our museum passes. This is such a great thing. So we have a collaboration with a lot of the museums in town, the Telfair Museum, the Railroad Museum, and you can check out those passes for yourself and a family of four, is that right? Family of four. So anything that you want to do with your family, you can probably find a resource at the public library.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, ma'am, and continue to do what you all do. We thank you so much for engaging, especially our, not just our youth, but our adults too. We don't have any chairman's items, we don't have any commissioner items, we go to no-table items, we go to items for individual action, all right? To request board approval of the following budget amendments and transfers, fiscal year 2025 in the general fund, A, transfer $15,159 from the community's support to transfer out to community, to Capital Improvement Program Fund. Appropriate funds balance $12,500,000 to increase transfers, transfer out to the Capital Improvement Program Fund. Two, in the Capital Improvement Fund, A, increase transfers from the general fund $15,159 to increase the West Broad Street YMCA project. B, increase transfers in from the general fund $12,500. C, to establish a Coleman Courthouse refurbishment program, project for $4 million. Establish a marine patrol facility projects for $2 million. Establish a fire, higher quarters, facilities, and equipment projects for $5 million. F, establish a Highway 17 safety community center facility project for $1 million. Establish a Hutchinson Island Riverwalk Slit 3 project for $500,000. FY '26, in the general fund, A, transfer $89,990 from the financial operations budget to transfer out to the CIP fund. Transfer $120,000 from the Information and Communication Service operating budget to transfer out to the CIP fund. And the National Opial Settlement Fund, appropriate fund balance $194,352. Increase revenue and expenditures, expenditures, $179,384. In the Capital Improvement Program, A, increase transfer in from the general fund $209,990 to establish a time and attendance project. B, transfer $500,000 from CIP contingency to increase the time and attendance project. C, increase state revenues $131,538 to increase the LMIG engineering project. D, transfer $20352 from the library renovation project to establish a Carnegie Library renovation project. E, transfer $2,500,000 from CIP contingency to CEMA building project. Four, in the sales tax three fund, amend project and budget as listed below. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Property motion is second that we approved the request. Are you ready for the question? Please cast your votes. All right, thank you. Request board approval of the, of update financial policy, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to ask Ms. Davis, our Finance Director, to come to the podium. She has a brief presentation on the updates that we're making to the county's financial policy. Ms. Davis?
Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning.
Slide show, there we go. We periodically review our financial policies to update them, so this is pretty much a review of that, and the purpose of these policies is to ensure us and establish a framework for sound financial management and decision-making in the transparent, accountable, and sustainable manner. And these policies apply to all departments, agencies, funds, and activities of all of the, all of the county. As I said, we periodically review these to update them and amend them for obsolete practices and new practices. So, accounts payable policies. We have a new policy. We always had policies, but we've never incorporated them into the financial services realm. So this is all a new policy, and it pertains to all departments and, as well as P-card purchases. And one of the policies we want to enact is to ensure that purchases made on P-cards through online services such as Amazon are actually delivered to facilities owned by the county. Budgeting and financial planning, we did have the enterprise funds at 50% being generated under their own revenues. We've increased that to 75%. We are requiring a five-year rolling CIP annual updates, and again, this is something we've always done, but we just put it into the policy. Funding decisions must align with the county's strategic plan. Salary savings cannot be repurposed before year-end. This is a new policy that we're putting in place because of some snafus we had this last year. And the budget book published annually on county website. Grants compliance policy, there's no real policy changes. We've just streamlined this to basically make it a policy document and not a procedures document. Payroll policy, again, this is a new policy that is, of course, we have always had payroll policies, but we've just incorporated them into the, the framework of the financial policies. P-card policies. Responsibility for audits has moved from the finance office to internal audit. Of course, finance still reviews all of these purchases and polices those. Detailed administrative processes removed. Again, it's a pure policy document, not a procedures manual. Employee gifts, charitable donations, seat assignments on airplanes. Curricular, extracurricular activity and events are not allowed. Again, this is just spelling something out that should be obvious. And personal charges, again, should be obvious, but we're making it a policy. Travel and training, we've condensed this. Again, we had some redundancies in the policy, so we've taken some of those out. Specifics, specifics of the policy are all-inclusive. County manager and finance director resolve the issues. Airline seat assignments, charges, travel insurance, and entertainment outside of conference fees are not reimbursable. Hotel rates over conference rates are the traveler's responsibility. And encourages use of county P-cards for travel, such as your registrations, your hotel charges, et cetera. And mileage reimbursement is capped at the cost of a round-trip airfare ticket. Any questions?
Any questions for the Financial Director? Hearing none? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. All right, let us move now to our action calendar. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Property motion is second that we approved the financial, update financial policy. Ready for the question? Please cast your votes. And thank you all for keeping me on task, because I'm, sometimes I get like that. All right, now, we move to the action calendar. There's no one who desired anything be taken off or be eliminated, so may I have a motion to accept the action calendar in its entirety?
Motion to approve in its entirety.
Property motion is second that the action calendar be accepted in its entirety. Are you ready for the question? All in favor, please cast your votes. All right, all votes are in, and just for public notice, if you will, notice number 11 is an IGA between the county and the city of Savannah to establish a DM in Carver Village. All right? There's some folks who waiting to know when that happened, what we're going to see, so it's on there, it's passed now. First readers, we don't have any. We have a second reader, all right? And when we read the second reader, if you would like to speak on the issue of the second reader, the manager has a pad over to his left, all right, my right. If you want to speak now concerning the amendment, amendment to chapter 13, Article 2, Chatham Area Transit Authority, Section 206, entitled Membership, as it refers to the local act under the authority provided by the Georgia Constitution to the law existing prior to the 2025 amendment. All right? So now, let me have, let me have a motion to open up the public comment. You don't need, okay. Is there anyone who want to speak on this issue? If you do now, please come and sign up. Signed up once, signed up twice, signed up three times. All right, we have one. All right, you can come to the mic and identify yourself. You have two minutes.
Hello, Chairman.
Good morning.
And Commissioners, good morning. I am President Donya Swinton. I am the President of the Amalgamated Transit Union at Chatham Area Transit Authority. I represent all laborers at Transit Area Authority. I just would like to clarify a few things on this bill and the situation that is going on at Chatham Area Transit. The county, first of all, we would like to thank you. We thank you for funding us through the village. Whatever you give us, we give y'all thanks, because the county has always bailed cat out of any deficit we have ever been in, and we thank you. You that have been on here long-term, that I really do appreciate. Your leadership is Mr. Kicklighter, the Chairman, and Mr. Lockett, because you have been long-term, you have always stood for the community, whether y'all agreed or did not agree, y'all always stood for what was right. And that's what a leader is. It's a selfless act. It's not a political thing. It's for the community and the people. And to represent, when it's not right for others, y'all still stood on what was best for the community and the people. And it's not going to always be agreeable, but not only am I the president, I drive a fixed route bus, I operate it every day, five and sometimes six days a week. We are short operators, and this is not a commission thing, it's a Chatham Area Transit thing. Things that we need to get straight in leadership, and it has nothing to do with the commission. But I would like to thank you all for each dollar that you give. It's very important. I feel like with the military, if y'all didn't give us all of it, still thank you, because we are still in debt of $8 million that we still owe you that we have not paid. So just the fact that y'all have gave us $16 million is a lot when we owe y'all. And yet, y'all still dig us out every hole. So that is a lot to say for the people that voted for that. That shows a lot to the laborers, that show us who are the leaders, who are strong, who are for us in each district. I live in your district. But in each district, I implore the community to pay attention to who you vote in these districts, and who looks out for the community and not personal interest or people, because being a leader is a selfless act. And that is what I have for Chatham Area Transit. I thank you all.
And thank you. All right. With that having passed now, may I have a motion to amend?
I make a motion to approve the-
Property motion is second that we approved the amendment. Are you ready for the question? Please cast your votes. All right, all votes are in, thank you.
And thank you for the kind words.
All right. All right, with that, Mr. Manager, you don't have anything?
You should have in front of you, Mr. Chairman, some updates from the Resource Department and Parks and Recreation.
All right. Thank you, all right. Recognize Commissioner Pharaoh.
Yeah, I'd just like to point a personal privilege that I want to express that I fully support and encourage local law enforcement cooperating with all state and federal agencies involved in legal, moral, and ethical police work in an effort to make our community safer.
ICE brings raised violence and fear into our communities.
Remove him.
Georgia only requires the bare minimum, but Chatham police- Georgia only requires a bare minimum, but Chatham police.
That was all I wanted to say, that I support law enforcement and cooperation between the different agencies to make our community a safer and more prosperous place to live, work, and play. Thank you.
All right. And let me say now, on the back of that, Commissioner Farrell, is that all our law enforcement in this county, whether we're talking about the Sheriff Department, whether we're talking about the County Department, the cities, departments, all right, we are mandated by law to assist in any federal agencies that come in here. I don't care whether it's ICE, I don't care whether it's FBI, I don't care whether it's Secret Service, I don't care if it's ATF. Whenever the assistance is asked for, we are in compliance. That is a law, and they are law enforcers. And so therefore, they must enforce the law, and they have the support of this commission. All right? We may not agree, but we will never be disagreeable. Thank you all, and with that, I'll take a motion. Yes, sir. All right.
I just want to state off of that, that a, a letter went out from one of the commissioners expressing his opinion, and it said that he consulted with every individual commissioner, and just for the record, he didn't consult with me. I echo the sentiments of the others that spoke here. There's, it's easy to stand up and protest certain things, I'm sure, when you're not in a leadership position that, that actually represents the people and their pocketbooks. And like the chairman said, if you put aside whatever your personal opinion is, which mine is, it's not a novel idea for law enforcement officers to actually support the law and uphold the law. I mean, that's number one, but. That's enough on that. Just simply, yeah, that's, that's, that's enough. But upholding the law is something that we support, and, and I support. I can speak for myself. My whole point is, is not one person up here can speak for the others. There, there was no votes taken by the board here, and, you know, I, I for one don't, don't like being lumped into something like that, because I believe, I believe that that's a very touchy issue. And again, we have to support law enforcement. That is the law, and if we don't, we could actually lose lots of money, which attacks everyone that lives here's pocketbook. So it's, it's never easy in this position, but thank you all, and I appreciate you expressing your opinions and everything.
All right. Anyone else? All right, with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
Second, public motion is second that we adjourn. Are you ready for the question? No question? Please cast your votes before you leave. Got to have a vote. Waiting on one? Waiting on one?
Wait.
Yeah, okay, we got it. All right.